Good evening, welcome to the Canby City Council's special meeting this evening. If you'll please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this community. Thank you for the leaders that are assembled not only here on the dais but here in the audience and those at home watching. We've had a trying week and guided our conversation tonight, provide all of us wisdom and the foresight to be able to move and look ahead. We lift up the families and victims of the tragedies across our country this past week in Dallas and Minnesota and Michigan and geez, too many, it seems to name. We just ask you to lift those families up and shield them and heal them. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Counselor Parker has a work function this evening, so he's going to be a little bit later this evening, so he sends his regrets and his apologies. So tonight, thank you all for being here on relatively short notice and for a special meeting and I want to thank my counsel for Wednesday's meeting. I was out of town attempting a vacation and so thank you for Wednesday's meeting. Let's just say that. It has been an unsettling week, to say the least, I think. And so hopefully tonight we can talk about the events of a week ago and definitely move on because I don't think it's reflective of our community as a whole. We've already kind of talked about the yellow cards and everyone's will be given three minutes to speak. Please know more than that because there's a lot of us. You know, we want to give everyone a chance to be heard and so just please be respectful for that. Like I said, Counsel President Dale will keep the time on that and give you a two-minute warning. If you're starting to hear comments that reflect already things that you may have prepared to say and, you know, maybe, I know we want to be able to say our piece, but maybe if it's something that has already been said a couple of times, you know, let's maybe see if that's something that still needs to be addressed or said in whatever that may be. I ask that there be politeness and courtesy and that we're courteous to each other and to the council. We're not at home on keyboards and these are actual people here, so let's be respectful of what's being said and what's being discussed. Tonight the council has prepared a resolution. We've had another draft perhaps for us to look at and talk about as well, so we will be discussing that piece of it as well. I have a letter, so we're going to, I have a statement that I'll read. It's very similar to what I've put on my Facebook page, but many of you may not have seen it, so I will read my statement again. I'll give an opportunity to the other counselors if they have a statement that they want to make, they're welcome to. I also received a letter from the group, the Sons of Confederate Veterans Group that was in our parade that I will read as well. And we will discuss and take comments from you because I do want you to have the opportunity to speak. I know many of you have spoke on Wednesday, but I still want that opportunity as well. A number of you have sent emails, which we appreciate. So I will be responding to all of those in time. It's been a little, it's been a little fast and furious on that end. And then we are going to discuss the resolution that's in front of us tonight that our city attorney and city manager and I and all of us have kind of read over and worked on and whatnot. So that's kind of the outline for this evening. Questions up here on the dais at all? Rick, anything you want to add? Joe, anything? Okay, great. So I read, my statement was, that I posted, just simply was, "What a wonderful inaugural Canby Independence Day celebration we had in Canby. Thank you all to who attended and to all the volunteers for their hard work. It exceeded my expectations. During the parade, there was an entry that was flying the Confederate flag. Many were offended by this and questioned why the city would allow this to happen. I was made aware of this after the conclusion of the parade. Statements whether through the use of words, actions, symbols, or in any other form made under the protection of the First Amendment expressing hatred or intolerance in any form are neither supported nor endorsed by the officials of the city of Canby, nor do they reflect the opinions or attitudes I believe of this city. These do not reflect my personal values or my family's values and beliefs. Many of you expressed concern of this float in the parade. Many have equated this as the city's support and/or endorsement of this organization. It is not. We are bound to a group's First Amendment right to free speech. We would not want to deny any person or group their right to this freedom. If we ban them or any group from the parade, we could be subject to legal action. The city of Canby supports no statement, symbol, action, or activity based on race, sex, age, disability, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or other protected characteristic that would in any way seek to deprive any person of their fundamental rights. Such a right is granted under the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oregon. Please feel free to reach out to me with any additional comments or concerns at HodsonB, that's H-O-D-S-O-N-B, at CI.canby.or.us. Understand that this is a process that we have to go through. We, as a city, I know there was concern about, well, why was the city not quicker on a response? We have to follow process. We don't have a paid PR person to crank these things out for us. We need to understand the situation and that's what I asked of our city manager and the city attorney to, we need to understand the situation before we can start sounding off. Wasn't familiar with the group, don't know the group, but needing to understand their side or what was on that aspect of it. We need to understand what we could do or not do, what we could say or not say. Those are pieces that, you know, as a government, we need to be careful. Somebody mentioned that it was about retaining votes, no? It's about making sure that we're not putting ourselves and our city in a further situation than we need to be in. You know, as I've read and to me, to me, the Confederate flag is a symbol of hate and oppression. I understand that. Others, it's a symbol of fighting tyranny in government. I understand that as well. For me, yeah, it's not a symbol that I support. It's not something that I can get behind or be behind. You know, I remember a, I don't know, I was fifth or sixth grade and we were watching a TV show at home and there was a gentleman on TV speaking and he was passionate, he was just excited and really trying to drive home the point and I made the comment to my mom and go, "Wow, that is a very well-spoken black man." And my mom snapped around so fast at me and she was like, "No, that's a very well-spoken man." So that, that's what I think of. I had a conversation with a couple of friends until about, I don't know, 1:30 last night about this and, you know, we talk about leadership being set and the tone being set and where our community gets led from and it is a top-down piece, but there is also a bottom-up piece as we talked about. And that it starts with us at the bottom being, you know, us here, yes, but also you guys in, you know, being able to step up and when you see something happening to be able to go, "You know what? That's not right." When I, when I hear stories of two people sitting in one of our local establishments having a conversation in their native language and across the lobby are a group of young men chiding them, making fun of them and throwing racial slurs at them, that bothers me. That's not what I perceive this community to be about. That's not what I perceive this community to be heading in that direction. Okay? It's unfortunate. The gentlemen that were in that organization, you know, they were in our parade. We found out, most of us found out about it after the fact and it, to me, that was something that I wasn't, wasn't real excited about that for our community. I think we in Canby must be better and do better to set the tone for the human condition. You know, we are a great community doing great things and we're getting a lot of recognition for really great things going on and then to have an Oregon Live article come up on a Friday and I think last count I was told it was 1,400 comments. You know, that's not the kind of press I want for Canby. We're better than that. So that's my piece on that. Any comments from, any other comments that you guys didn't say on Wednesday you want to say tonight at all or?
I think you covered that well.
Maybe at the end of the meeting we can wrap up with our comments?
Okay. So the, I received an email on Saturday night about 10 o'clock from the Sons of the Confederate Veterans and here's what they had to say. "Mr. Mayor and City Counsel, on behalf of the Sons of Confederate Veterans, Pacific Northwest Division and SCV Camp 458 of Portland, Oregon, we would like to thank you for allowing us to participate in the Canby Independence Day Parade. It has come to our attention that a small yet vocal minority of citizens have voiced some concern about our organization's participation in the parade. This is somewhat concerning for us to hear. The Sons of Confederate Veterans is an honorable historic veterans organization that has been around since 1896. We are a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit group whose sole purpose is to honor and defend the Confederate soldier. We are vehemently anti-racist and do not allow any type of hate or hate speech. Our usage of the Confederate battle flag and other Confederate national regimental flags is a vital component of our mission to expose the truth about Confederate soldier and his reasons for defending his home state from invasion. We would ask that you please do some research into who we are and what we stand for before you make any harsh statements against what we stand for. Please visit our national organization's website for all the information needed to make a sound judgment. Our organization honors all American veterans from all wars this great country has been involved in. We spend countless hours doing cemetery cleanups, grave marker dedications, civil war education classes, battlefield preservation, living history events, monument cleanups, and public interaction and recruiting events. We are also nationally recognized by all branches of the United States Armed Forces with Junior ROTC HL Honesty Award. It is important to note that the United States passed a law in 1958 giving the Confederate veterans the same rights and benefits of all United States veterans, U.S. Public Law 85-425, Section 410. As a show of good faith, we would like to invite you to attend our upcoming camp meeting in July, gain a chance to meet our members and see if you resolve exactly who we are and what we do. Please email for details. It is also, it is important for you to know that our firsthand experience, our presence was overwhelmingly received with positive feedback and applause from most everyone we passed in the parade. Obviously, a vocal minority of people chose to voice their opinion before, against us being there. But I'm like, but I think that if you were to take a poll of all attendees of the parade, you would find that there was support for us. Please take this into consideration since you are an elected official. Again, we thank you for putting on such a wonderful parade and allowing us to participate. We are looking forward to next year and ask for your support in honoring our veterans." That was a letter from them. Questions now for Joe. Any questions in any way? I mean, a lot of questions have been brought up in terms of what can and can't be done, Joe. Mr. Lindsey, so?
Okay. If I can just read into that question?
Yeah.
Which is, if we're a government and there's a public forum and constitutionally speaking, a public forum most certainly exists in our streets and our sidewalks, then speech has basically a very heightened protection and the free expression of not only speaking but conduct, you know, so activity that has a message to it is basically, there's a, there's a per se rule against governments having a compelling interest of squelching such speech in a public forum because, you know, the idea of the First Amendment being that it's most prevalent in the public forum. You know, there's, there's different levels of forum. There's quasi-public and then there's, you know, private forums and those have other levels of analysis, but when our government is trying to restrict speech in the public forum, we have to have a legitimate compelling interest and we have to narrowly tailor it so much that it has to be content neutral, so it can't even be about what the speech is. And it has, we basically have to come up with some sort of analysis and activity that has the least amount of effect against speech. And in the case of a flag being flown in a public forum, there really is no way to restrict somebody's waving a flag in a public forum in America. That's just the way it is because there's no compelling legitimate government interest in keeping them from waving a flag unless of course there's a bomb strapped to it or something.
So with that being said then, because again, the example keeps coming in a lot of the comments and whatnot that in social media world it was about, well, you can allow them what prevents us from allowing an ISIS group or the Ku Klux Klan or?
Somebody could wear an ISIS T-shirt out on the sidewalk, yes. They can.
Would they be allowed?
Freedom of speech.
Yes, ma'am, could you please speak up for some of us in the background?
Sorry, yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry.
I'm speaking into the mic, but I'm not enunciating, so sorry.
Yeah.
Back off the mic, so it doesn't get too clear.
The microphones, by the way, when you get up here are for TV land. The new building, it'll be surround sound, so, right? Surround sound?
Try not to yell into the microphone.
Yeah, we'll try to, we'll adjust and we'll yell, sorry about that.
No, I mean, the idea is even if it's distasteful, I mean, more and more, the court has ruled, the Supreme Court has ruled that basically, you know, the freedom of expression is pretty broad and wide and any government curtailing of that has to have a legitimate compelling reason and then your approach to it has to be so narrow that it can't be about the content anyway, right? Unless of course the act itself is a crime.
So an example of unprotected speech, you've talked to us some last week about incitement of a crime, what are some other examples?
Well, like there is no First Amendment protection for libel or defamation, right? So we don't have to put up with people lying about other people and that's to give them harm basically with your words. And of course then you can go to court and you can sue people for that. And if the government allows that sort of thing, then the government should probably be sued as well for allowing that sort of thing. If somebody's actively engaging in harmful speech that hurts other people in a financial way.
If an organization is on the Secretary of State's foreign terrorist organizational list, for instance ISIS, is there any basis for banning a presence in a public forum or a parade float, for instance?
Well, you know, I would think, and if the public is trying to control speech, I mean, somebody can go and they could give a speech on the sidewalk that says, "I love ISIS," you know, and I don't, I'm trying to...
Let me get you.
Yeah, I mean, so, and it's not that much different when you have a public forum and the government's in charge of it. And here's the other thing, they fill out a permit form maybe to, or get permission to be in the parade and then suddenly they rip off their trench coats and it says ISIS on it. You know what I mean? Like, the idea is there, the First Amendment protects people, people's right to express their ideas as long as those ideas, and there's even a lot of case law that says even inciting, like really incendiary sort of things, don't, just because there might be a potential for criminality or some sort of overt crazy response, I mean, especially in Oregon, right? We did away with our fighting words portion of our harassment. It used to be that you could prosecute people for harassment just for using fighting words basically, you know, trying to incite somebody else to fight you and that was actually held as unconstitutional because you have the right to even kind of provoke people. And what we do is we wait till somebody commits a crime and then we prosecute him for that and we prosecute the activity of it. I know that, I know that sounds confusing to some people in a sense that that's how far we go, but the flip side is then we don't have people willy-nilly taking away other people's freedom of expression, you know, the stuff that doesn't offend us, but that might offend some.
So does the Oregon Constitution have a yet broader definition of protection of speech?
Well, here's, here's the way law works, right? Is there's the codification of law and statutes, but then there's the common law, which is the, all the case law. And the case law in Oregon does have a broader approach. They allow more speech protection basically than the First Amendment in the federal line of cases does.
Interesting. Joe, is there, is there a legal definition of hate speech? We use that phrase a lot, but has it been defined?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, it gets used in, in case law, but the problem is, and it depends, the meaning of it would have to do with whatever, you know, either state or jurisdiction that you're in. But, but I mean, hate speech, for the most part, there's not really, I mean, the legal import of that is, is, at least under Oregon law, I don't think there's a legal significant, a significant legal definition for it, if that makes sense.
Regardless of statutory or case law, we just don't have a definition?
I, not, not, I don't think one that's meaningful necessarily in that, like you can't, you're not going to find a law against hate speech, if that's what you're asking.
Just trying to see where we are legally. Is there a prohibition on hate speech and if so, then there must be a definition. I hear you saying there is neither.
No, I mean, like I say, there's, there's damaging speech, like defamation or libel, right? Either the written word or the, and then there's conduct that then threatens the peace and those cases have kind of softened over the years, you know, to where now you can, you know, burn the flag, you know, and do nasty things to it as well in a public forum. So it's kind of, you know, people can say irate hateful things on their T-shirts and walk through courthouses, you know? It's protected activity under the First Amendment, so.
So in the end, Joe, and I know this is, this is a question a lot of people in this room have on their mind and on the dais, is there any room for a public official to look at a float and say, "That's not right for my town"?
Well, here's, here's, because we talked about what if a private organization then takes over and then like I tried to distance myself from giving future legal advice to any other, you know, institution.
Yeah.
But the idea is, you know, they have a, in Boston, there was a case where they didn't want basically a gay float or gay rights float in the Boston parade and it was a private organization and the court ruled basically that they couldn't use, you know, the state law to force a private institution to accept a message that was contrary to the organizers' message that they wanted to have. And then there's laws that say you can have time, place, and manner restrictions on things like parades and, you know, you don't have to have two parades at once, right? So if you're already having a parade, then you don't, this city doesn't have to come in and allow somebody to have a parade alongside of it. So therefore, we can kind of distance ourselves from whatever restrictions that... So therefore, we can kind of distance ourselves from whatever restrictions that a private institution would put on it. There would be some risk if you're in a public or even quasi-public forum for a private institution. You still run amok of the Constitution sometimes. I mean, there's cases where malls that invite the public in and benefit from the public coming through then have had to allow picketing inside the mall. You know, so you don't get away from protests and picketing all the time just because you're a private institution, but that's their problem, that wouldn't be our problem anymore.
I mean, what I was after is, in the end, can a parade official, can the mayor, can whoever, is there any latitude to say, "That's not right for Canby. It's disgusting, we've got kids, you're out of here"?
Well, no, because the problem is, the next mayor might say that's not right to something that everybody here would like.
Counselor Hayden, you have any...
He answered my question. Thank you.
Perfect.
Ms. Mayor, I think this would be helpful to everyone, too. Joe, if we were to try to, as a government body that's bound up, hold a constitution, what would be the risks and potential consequences if we were to try to restrict...
Keys.
Oh, I'm just going to say, what would be the...
Yellow client.
What would be the risks and potential consequences if this government body tried to restrict certain entrance? I'd like you to share that, so people understand.
Well, I mean, the rubber meets the road at remedies, you know, for constitutional law. And sometimes, sometimes the remedy is just they get to do whatever it is that you said they couldn't do. And maybe that's a year later, after it goes through the courts, maybe it's a couple of years later after they go through the courts. But sometimes when you restrict and intentionally restrict people's rights, then there's a price tag involved. So, you know, you could, you could be fined, or a jury could find that you, when you violate somebody's constitutional rights, and when they're important rights, that you could end up with a pretty hefty price tag to go along with it.
Can I follow that up with one more question?
Yes, sir.
Since you're the head of our risk management team...
Louder.
Since you're the head of our risk management team, do you see that the benefits outweigh the risks in trying to restrict certain entrance?
No, absolutely not. I'm, you know, as an official myself of the city, I swear to, and as a lawyer in the Oregon State Bar, I swear to uphold the constitutions of the federal government and the state constitution as well. And so I, I would not advise ever to do something unconstitutional or take away somebody's constitutional rights. And I take that seriously because, you know, I think we're here to protect, serve, and to keep people's rights. I mean, the First Amendment is not a government right, although I shouldn't say government speech has protections too. And freedom of speech, but, and those are very limited interesting cases. But we're talking about people's rights. And, you know, sometimes that's a double-edged sword for folks, that somebody has the right to say bad things as much as they have the right to say good things, right? But the fact is, we have the right to express our ideas, and not everybody thinks the same. And that can, that can be a problem for folks, and we hope that everybody kind of has a sense of community and a sense of appreciation for everybody else. But, you know, people don't always appreciate everybody else, and it's kind of unfortunate. And that's why I like my job, because I get to at least prosecute some people that I think don't have an appreciation for other folks.
There's been some question, Joe, about what government speech is versus public speech, especially in line with parades that are sponsored by a city.
Well, there was this question about government speech and government compelled speech onto individuals, but then individuals trying to compelling, compelling speech for the government. An interesting case I found was, you know, the KKK tried to force, you know, a government to, they wanted to erect a cross, you know, in a public forum. And that case, the government said, "Well, a monument like that forces speech onto the government, because then that monument lasts forever and it kind of starts to look like the government is the one that is uttering whatever that is." And so the government has a right to not have its speech, you know, forced upon itself, basically. And so that's where I think people, there is some confusion, that why can't Canby say, "This isn't our speech," right? The problem there is, it's a one-time event on a public forum on a float, and it's obviously not Canby's tractor. You know, I saw the pictures. So, I mean, it's, we can't, we can't hitch our analysis to that particular case, because it isn't like somebody's going to make a statue and make us live with it every day. It's a one-time event that, in America, we get to be in a public space where discourse and argument and everything happens all the time. We don't get to control it as a government.
Anything? Time? Tracey?
Actually, the questions haven't been answered thus far. I might have more to ask.
Joe, why is it that, or why have it, or why has it been that other cities are able to do that? Ban it, change the allowances of a parade and others can't?
Well, I think oftentimes they have private organizations that are doing it, and then they take the risk of having a message and then sticking to that message. I mean, our government is of the people, for the people, by the people, right? So our message is a crazy, it's everybody. And so we can't pick and choose which message we like. Everything has to be content neutral, and there has to be a legitimate, compelling interest in even time, space, and manner restrictions on activities that happen in public forums, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Joe, for that. I appreciate that. We'll get into the citizen comments here. I have Jewel Calstrom?
Calstrom.
Pardon me?
Calstrom.
Calstrom, thank you. Hi Jewel, how are you?
Good.
Go ahead and come up there to that table, and all you need to do is state your first name.
My name is Clara Jewel Calstrom. I go by Jewel. And I live here in Canby with my husband and my two young daughters. And I have this statement written, a lot of words. And I don't feel the need to say most of these words any longer after the conversation that we've observed here today. But what I would like to address is this notion that a Canby sanctioned event is such that absolutely any sort of participation is allowed under the guise of free speech. And I would implore further research into the possibility of the fact that the freedom of speech does not simply by virtue allow the entrance of any group or individual into a sanctioned event by the, by the city. I work closely with policy myself. I feel like there, I've, the research I've done around this topic in preparation for this meeting has indicated to me that standards around city sanctioned events are very common. I have documents that I can leave here with the group today. And those documents, this document in part provides some examples of what I found in a very perjury review of what other cities and counties do for their organized events. And I'm going to read a few to you from what I found of other organizational documents. The first is from, the first is the only one that I have a citation for. I did make a point of getting all of these quotes from Oregon, but in the interest of thinking that I had a lot more to talk about, I was going to keep this part brief, but I really think that this part is the most important part now. In that, I think that the city of Canby can take more control and assure that what these public events represent is what the city of Canby intends to represent of itself. So the text for the first example, which is from a document issued by the City of Kaiser Chamber of Commerce, yes?
One minute.
Thank you. By the City of Kaiser Chamber of Commerce, reads, "All entries must be in good taste and promote the goal of the community, the goal of the community's spirit and civic pride. No entry shall display material that is offensive or discriminatory to any race, religion, sex, national origin, age, or marital status." In addition to that, other documents from parade organization groups sanctioned by counties and cities here in Oregon list things like, "An entry may not include any image or content that includes nudity, profanity, lewdness, illegal drugs, violence, obscenity, hate, racism, or that is vulgar or sexually explicit, insulting, offensive to any ethnic, religious, political, or other identifiable group or individual as determined by a parade official." So clearly there is some level of authority provided to the organizers in this case. And lastly, the last example states that the parade official reserves the right for parade officials to remove an entry at any time if the official observes an entry that is offensive, in poor taste, or the entrance is confrontational. So all of these documents that I pulled this from were from City of Commerce and, and city parade organization.
Okay.
And so I believe it is possible, and I think that we should look further into it. And I think that we should consider some of the risk that you've explained, which I truly believe is more minimal than it may have been represented. But I think that Canby needs to consider some of that risk worth taking for the sake of presenting itself the way that we want Canby to be perceived by the state and by the country.
Well, thank you, Jewel, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
If you will leave that with our city reporter, she'll make sure that that's included and that she'll pass that on to Joe, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, Jewel. Sarah Spoon.
Hey, good evening.
Sarah, will you lift up that microphone so that the TV audience can hear what's being said? Perfect. So, thank you.
My name is Sarah Spoon. I live at 978 South IV Court here in Canby. I'm excited to support this resolution overall. I believe that ideology is about supporting one group or idea, but public policy should always be about not serving a single viewpoint alone. It should be about engaging in difficult discourse, finding common ground, and moving forward together toward a better community. The Fourth of July event was otherwise fantastic, and I value the time put in both by the council, the Independence Day Committee, and city staff and volunteers to make it so. I believe that even given what we're talking about today, the city has a responsibility to continue to learn about what is legally allowed to protect our cultural diversity and the sense of comfort and safety of our people of color. In the meantime, this argument never had to be, had to become First Amendment or a statement reinforcing our culture of diversity and inclusivity. I believe that with a timely response from leadership, it could have always been about both passion and conviction for the Constitution and passion and conviction for a rich, diverse culture. Now we're struggling and divided as a community by a false and impassioned dichotomy. In times of community crisis, leadership should be bold. Now I'm excited to thank you, for city leader, each of you and city leadership, for not just hoping that the controversy goes away on its own, so that those of us who are unaffected by racial intolerance every day can go on with our lives while our residents of color are left unsupported and confused about our culture. Silence in this matter absolutely is complicity. I know that the city has been thrust into the center of a complex issue. And I know that what each of you in front of me has fielded in the past several days and week has not been easy or even at times fair. But what we're doing here is important. Canby is the town where I was raised, and it's the town where I chose to come back and raise my four children. I love this city. I do believe it to be the last great piece of Americana. I both view the Confederate flag as a symbol of hate, and I can love our Constitution. A city's culture comes both from the top down and the bottom up. As leadership, you are not responsible alone. The tone of should be and now has been set by leadership, but real action to make our city safe and welcoming to all marginalized communities doesn't happen in council chambers. It happens in our streets, at our children's athletic and artistic events, and at our dining room tables. Let's move forward knowing that the city is officially of similar heart, but that responsibility for creating an inclusive culture belongs to each of us. We need to have conversations with our kids, our families, our neighbors, our friends. And when something happens in our town that we don't like, we have an obligation to stand up and speak up. The First Amendment only has value when it's used. We need to be willing to sacrifice the comfort of our privilege by being real allies and engaging in uncomfortable conversations every day, to be active participants in shaping our community's culture, and not satisfied simply by being angry and loud on the internet. So I encourage all of you, given our struggle as both a city and a nation right now, if there's not a time to get together between, behind a positive, inclusive message, there is never a time. And I hope that you enact the resolution today.
Thanks, Sarah. Mr. Bob Backstrom.
First of all, I want to, oh, I'm Robert Backstrom. I'm a longtime resident of Canby. I want to thank all of you for all that you do for our city. You're dedicated citizens who get lots of flak and no pay. And I'm grateful for your willingness to serve. I thank you sincerely. I'm also sorry that you had to give up another evening away from your families. But one thing should be clear from the start, we must not erode any rights that are guaranteed under the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. If we start doing that, be prepared for chaos and lawsuits. No matter how distasteful or how you personally feel about certain symbols, everyone in this nation is guaranteed protection of freedom of speech. So I ask, what exactly did the people on that float do that would prompt us to silence them? I watched them go by. They were well behaved. They displayed no offensive language or gestures. I saw nothing that would cause them to be derided or spit upon, as I heard did happen. If that did happen, I am embarrassed for our city, and I hope that the police have received a complaint. Last I heard, spitting on anyone is not protected under the First Amendment. We may not like that Confederate flag, but those people are protected under the First Amendment. I do not like the naked bike riders in Portland, but they are protected under the First Amendment. Planned Parenthood killing millions of American babies is absolutely repulsive to me, but those people are protected under the First Amendment. I didn't like it when I saw on television someone in the gay parade mooning and another one giving the finger to the camera, but they are protected under the First Amendment. I don't like it when folks burn the American flag, but they are protected by the First Amendment. The First Amendment grants all Americans, regardless of their views, the right to express themselves. I absolutely understand and sympathize with those who are offended, but that does not give us the right to take away protections under the First Amendment. Please, I ask of you, do not put Canby in the middle of this controversy. It's a slippery slope that I want no part of my taxes going to support. If we stop this group, who will be next? If you appreciate the incredible wisdom and foresight of our forefathers, and I believe that you do, please adopt this resolution and let's all go home. Thank you for all that you do.
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Ken Buckles.
In my lifetime, being married to her was against the law. A retired high school teacher and head football coach, I'm the executive director of Remembering America's Heroes Veterans. I played college football and became friends with many black football players. I'm still good friends with many of them today. I coached many black kids and got to know their parents in three different sports. With the veterans, I've gotten to know nine famous Tuskegee Airmen, Mexican-American veterans, Native American veterans, Navajo co-talkers, Japanese-Americans of the 442nd. 100% of them, when they have that thrown in their face, it's offensive and it hurts. 100% of every one of those races that have fought and served for this country. The other thing is, I didn't go to the parade, I had stuff to do. I've gone to it many times, and I love this community. My wife is well-known by a lot of people in Canby, and they love her. She dressed up in red, white, and blue. She took her granddaughter, my granddaughter, my stepdaughter to the parade, and they come up, and they come home and they're shook up. They're shook up and very upset. Why? Because she was forced to sit in the back of the bus growing up in Atlanta, Georgia. She was forced to drink in white-only, not drink in white-only, and white-only bathrooms and restaurants and all that, so it was, it was a reminder. And you two women were amazing, powerful on what she said. Someone has to take a stand, because if not, then I'm going to organize a flag with sons of Nazi veterans, ISIS veterans, I'm going to get gays to come here and have rainbow flags and throw candy out. I'm going to get gays to come here and have rainbow flags and throw candy out. Is that what we want? The bottom line is, it's all about compassion and empathy for your fellow man. That's the bottom line. That's where we're divided on every issue. There's those who care, and there's... I don't give a damn. Quit being politically correct. I don't care. Shove it. This is historical. This is it. I don't care what you think. Then there's others that say, no, I do care. I care what people think, and I don't want to upset them and offend them. It's not politically correct. It's right and wrong. It's what Jesus preached, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." The golden rule. Common sense. 1960s, I would have been arrested for marrying you! And there would have been a bunch of people applauding and saying, "You end lover. What are you doing with her?" Yeah, I'm riled up. Our image is at stake. My black friends have all called and said, "Man, you live in a racist town." No, I'm trying to defend it. I'm trying to defend it and say, "No, no, that's not it." But that's the image we got, and I read some of the stuff on Oregon Live. It's disgusting. But sometimes, and we've seen in our country's history, people have to take a stand. And she said it beautifully. We have to take a stand because it's the right thing to do. It's called, you either have empathy, compassion, and care about other people and how that impacts their lives, or you don't. That's the bottom line. Because we're not going to change anyone's minds. You've got your minds made up. We just need more people in this world to have empathy and compassion and caring. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Melinda.
I'm Melinda Buckles, and I am a proud citizen of Canby. I've been here for 10 years. My husband's been here for 25 years. I've been very good friends with the Cuts, so I've been in Canby since 1990, back and forth. I've never, ever seen anything like this in the parade. I brought my kids. I have five kids and eight grandkids down to Canby almost every year to the parades, and I've never seen anything like that. I think the bottom line is nothing happens until something happens. This was our something. We're all, as a community, looking to you guys to do something about it. There has to be a law. It has to be a change. That's how the first one got there. The one that you were talking about, that nobody knows what it means to have freedom of speech. What does that mean? I didn't get a clear answer from you. It's just, you can do anything, you don't have to do anything. What is it? We need to start somewhere and do something about it. I love this city. I've never experienced any racial anything until the flak came by. So we have to do something. I want to do it for my grandkids. I want them to come to Canby when I'm gone. This is a wonderful place, and I don't want it to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Will Greenleaf.
Hi there. Thank you.
Hi, Will. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. I was... My wife and my son were at the parade in front of the library, and I got on my iPhone to take a picture of my kid scrambling for candy and sharing his candy with other kids and adults. And checking the background, I see this float. My wife, my child, I respect freedom of speech. I can wait. I can wait for my picture, let them get out of the way. I don't want them in my picture. So I waited. One of them ran up and shoved a pamphlet into my wife's hand. That was too far. Why did they pick her? Why did they shove something in some pamphlet? I know they were probably feeling that they were being liberal and welcoming and trying to share their point of view with someone that they feel probably opposes their point of view. I didn't like it. I snatched it out of my wife's hand, which was disrespectful of her. I shouldn't take things from her like that, but I snatched it out of her hand, I crumpled it up, and I threw it on the ground. And I felt guilty and picked up the trash and put it in the trash again. Slight disagreement. I do believe that everyone should have a right to speech. Everyone should be able to say whatever they want, especially on these kinds of issues that are dividing our country right now. We don't hear from these people. We can't fix these problems. But these weren't people... These weren't my neighbors. These weren't people in my community. This was not a free speech in terms of what our community is about. This was somebody from outside our community trying to stir up some issues, tried to get some free press, and I don't think that they have a right to a forum in our community. They have a right to speak, and if there are people in this community who share their ideas, I want to hear them, and I want to talk to them, and I want to understand them, and I want to try and find some ways that we can move forward as a nation, as a community. But a float should be sponsored by some people who live here, by organizations who are in this community, by businesses that are in this community, and I see no reason to grant a forum for those who don't participate in our... a member of our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Fiona, is it Gouds?
I have a question.
Thank you.
My name is Fiona. I'm actually visiting from unincorporated Plaquemines County, and I'm here to state that I am disappointed in my neighbors in Canby who are not outraged by this. Some feel, or may feel, that it is inoffensive, but you can only feel that way if you are not opening your heart and standing with empathy side by side with all of your neighbors. The fact that anyone would hoist this flag in this day and age is simply heartbreaking. It is undeniably a tarnished symbol that impedes the progress towards unity and freedom, and that so many people are still having to strive towards in a united and free United States. Why? Why would we present another barrier for them? And in a time when brave movements such as Black Lives Matter need our support, all of our support, regardless of our skin color, we cannot stand idly by and overlook this type of symbolic slap in the face. With this float, I feel you have condoned the oppression of our fellow citizens, racism in our community, and you're perpetuating an archaic view of the world that in this moment, in light of current events, quite frankly, terrifies me and worries me about the future. But I did not come here today out of fear. I came here because I know only love can trump this sort of hate. I am here for the love of my neighbors. I am here for a love of united progress towards the future, and I am here, quite frankly, for a love of Plaquemines County where I was raised and where someday I hope to be proud to raise a family of my own. Please, 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 I implore you, do something brave here so that we can preserve a future we are proud of, and let us all unite and shatter this hatred with our united voices. Love will win. We will win. United, we will win. Thank you.
And after that, it's going to be Kevin Starrett.
Hi. My name is Cindy Riley, and I am also a proud citizen of Canby for the last 25 years. I raised my family here, and now my grandchildren are being raised here. I wanted to take a little bit different approach on this. I think the event happened. We kind of need to put that behind us and figure out what we're going to do in the future. I support the Second Amendment. I agree with some of the people who said I think we should do further research on what we could do. I can also tell you, I grew up in the '60s, and as a 16-year-old girl, I traveled from Portland, Oregon, to Birmingham, Alabama, to support the Civil Rights Movement and work towards desegregation. I can tell everyone... I remember that clearly. It's still kind of... You can see I'm kind of emotional about that. But that Confederate flag is absolutely, regardless of its heritage and what it means to some people, it is a symbol of hate. And I want to be proud to have my grandchildren raised here. I am proud of this city, and I think, you know, I didn't... I recently quit working, so I have more time, but I went out and looked at all your resolutions. I looked at your charter, the different things that you've said over the years. I see a lot of information on there about wanting to revitalize this city, and I'm proud of that. And I think revitalized to me means attracting young people, millennials. If you want millennials and people of diversity and inclusivity in this city, you need to support... You need to think about what that does to your message. I think you want this city to grow and revitalize and have people come here, young businesses. You want young people to be proud to be from here. And I think that you should do whatever it takes within the law, but I think that needs more research to do that. I want to be proud to have my daughter wanted to come back to this city to live and raise her children. Okay, I'm about done, but I just think it's really important. I value all people, and another thing, if there was ever a time to think seriously about this, it's now. As I said, I worked on the Civil Rights Movement in the '60s. This last week is a good indication that there's a lot of work still to be done, and I watched the entire session of the memorial in Dallas today, where there was the former President Bush, a current President Obama, and many people of faith there, and the Polk Police Force. If that was not... I don't know if any of you saw that, but that was absolutely a message of we need love and not hate. And I think our city needs to embody that. So thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Kevin Starrett, and then Winnie Savory.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kevin.
I was raised in New York City, Brooklyn, to be exact. My grandparents were all immigrants. I don't have any particular connection to the Confederate flag of the South. None of my family is from the South. But you know, I read this resolution and talks about inclusivity and tolerance for all people, but it sounds like it's tolerance for all people who support a specific agenda. I don't give a damn about the Confederate flag. I put a Confederate flag on my Facebook page just because people were demanding that it be taken down. I'll tell you this: This symbol means different things to different people, and you can all choose what it means to other people, but that's a projection. This symbol was appropriated by a lunatic who murdered people in a church in Charleston, and that's sick and sad. But what would you have done, or what would you be considering, if that lunatic had been the gay murderer who shot up the club in Orlando and had a rainbow flag behind him? Would you be considering burning or banning the rainbow flag? It doesn't mean to everybody what it means to these people. These people hurt nobody. They weren't burning police cars. They weren't rioting. They were a historical society of which I knew nothing until I looked at their Facebook page today, could find no racist overtones. Are we only going to allow what we approve of or what liberals approve of? Let's remove all the flags. Let's remove the Christian flags. Let's remove the Mexican flags. Let's remove the rainbow flags because somebody's offended by it. For all of you people who think that this flag has this terrible meaning that you have decided it means, let me share with you a Clinton-Gore poster from 1992, okay? And if you think I made this up, they're all over the Internet. This flag didn't become an issue until the Left decided it was going to become an issue. Now, if we're going to talk about inclusivity, then let's get rid of the Clintons and the Gores and the Left who have approved of this flag in the past and used it as a campaign item. If we want to start silencing people because we're offended, let's start thinking about who else is going to be offended, all right? If the state and the power of the government is going to be used to silence people, let me assure you that it is not going to stop with a small group of a historical society. Thank you.
Winnie Savory, and then Larry Boatright.
My name is Winnie Savory. I would like to make a brief comment and then cede the rest of my time to Larry Boatright. Can I do that? Okay. There's no doubt that slavery is a blight in our history. It is a time of shame. It is a time of man's inhumanity to man, but it is our history. In 1861, the party of Abraham Lincoln fought to free the slaves. Fast forward to today. What is our history today? We are living history right now. What is our legacy today? What have we done to bring shame to our country today? Are 50 million babies killed equivalent to slavery? Are 50 million of the most helpless in our society equivalent to the same shame? As reprehensible as this issue is in this group, I respectfully submit that you reject this resolution because it rejects the First Amendment of our Constitution. And we honestly, we have far more serious issues going on in our country today. Thank you.
Larry Boatright, and you, sir, have an additional 4:50... You have 4 minutes and 53 seconds. And then Kathleen Jesky, you're next. Hi, sir. There she is. Hi, Kathleen.
I'm reading this for John Savory because he couldn't be here, and I agree with what he has to say.
Larry, can you speak up, please?
Yeah. You were supposed to get a copy of the Constitution so that you could read what the First Amendment says, but we forgot it. So, "The First Amendment of our Constitution, which is the law of the land, states that 'Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances.'" After the Fourth of July parade, there was a lot of loose talk about banning a particular group of folks that were in the parade because a few other folks were discomfited. The ironic, as well as moronic, thinking was that we should be an inclusive city, and so that end, we should be less inclusive by banning a group that displayed the Confederate battle flag. That makes no sense whatsoever. The First Amendment of the Constitution is foremost because without it, the rest of the Constitution is meaningless. The First Amendment was designed to protect minority points of view and to guarantee that all citizens could stand in a public forum and be heard. So while there may have been a couple of parade watchers that felt uncomfortable because they were exposed to the stars and bars of the Confederacy, well, I'd feel uncomfortable if Planned Parenthood had a float in the parade, but my discomfort is outweighed by the rights under the First Amendment to be in the parade. Finally, people that are ignorant of how and why the Constitution was written should read a little history. The First and as well the Second Amendment are meant to protect citizens of this country from the petty tyrants and minor despots who sometimes dwell in positions of power from foisting their biases, prejudices, and ill-conceived ideas on those of us that don't hold similar points of view and might even cite working knowledge of the Constitution. It is though those few precious rights is outlined in the First Amendment that separate us from nations where the rule of law doesn't prevail and where despotism can rear its deadly head at any moment. I have little doubt that this city council will uphold the rule of law, support the First Amendment, and put a stop to all the flapdoodle that would deny one group of citizens their basic rights as Americans simply because another group of citizens were made to feel uncomfortable. Now, that's a statement from John, but I'd like to make a point as well.
You have 2 minutes, sir.
I think the city attorney has told you that if you pass this resolution, you're basically going, breaking the Constitution of the United States. It looks to me like most of you are bending over backwards to try and find an excuse. It looks to me like most of you are bending over backwards to try and find an excuse to do that. Now, I don't belong to the sons of the Confederate veterans, but I am the son of a Confederate veteran. I also was raised in Georgia, and my great-great-grandfather, Reuben Boatright, was a 16-year-old farm boy. They owned no slaves that fought under that flag to try and keep his farm, his family, and everything they owned from being burned to the ground by an invading army led by General Sherman. And another thing is, is the South only invaded one, had one battle in the Northern Territory. The rest was all fought in the South, in Virginia, Tennessee, Georgia, South Carolina. Now, I know a lot of people now hate that flag. It's all, it's what, it's what the progressives do, is they divide us all into factions. Well, I grew up in Georgia and I don't hate that flag. It has nothing to do with hate or discrimination now. It has to do with honoring the history of people's families and their country, which to those people back then was their states. Thank you.
Kathleen Jesky. Thank you, Larry. And then I believe it's Siobhan O'Connor will be next. Thank you.
Actually, I think you gave me one of those.
Hi. I'm sure I have.
Hi Kathleen.
I've got someone with me to help me out here. And I want to start by saying that General Edward Camby, for whom our city is named, fought for the Union during the Civil War, and this is my stepson, fought on the same side during the Iraq War as a Marine sniper. And I'm just going to keep him right here with me while I talk. And I don't think that General Camby would be any happier than my son about the Confederate flag flying in a parade on a day that's to honor our freedom. I heard about the Fourth of July parade while I was visiting Washington DC, and a number of people, beginning with my daughter and including others from around the area, contacted me to tell me how shocked they were to see that flag in our parade. I was also shocked, as it is not generally considered part of Oregon's heritage, nor has it been a staple in previous parades. Additionally, controversy over the flag has recently been reignited when a terrorist killed, a terrorist white supremacist killed nine African-American church members in South Carolina last year. The flag has since been banned from the Capitol grounds in South Carolina and has also been banned from public displays in California. I would respectfully ask here if the city attorney's area of expertise is one of constitutional law. While the flag originated during the Civil War, it turned up only occasionally between the end of the war and 100 years later during the mid-20th century and the beginning of the modern civil rights movement. That is when the flag made its biggest resurgence and was flown by people who proclaimed things like segregation now, segregation forever. I am fully in support of the First Amendment. I spent time in Washington DC waving flags and saying things that I'm sure many people here would not agree with. But I ask the council and citizens to think about some sensible guidelines that will keep that kind of controversy out of our city parade and make it welcoming and inclusive for all. We've already discussed the many other kinds of flags that we could allow in the parade should we take this broad interpretation of the First Amendment. ISIS, Nazi flags, Planned Parenthood flags. I don't want any of that in our city parade. I believe we can find a solution that both honors the First Amendment and respects everyone. Passing this resolution as presented here would be a good beginning towards unifying our community, and I see nothing in this resolution that any person who wants to be part of a welcoming, accepting community would not favor. But additionally, I'm asking for some sensible rules going forward to prevent this event from becoming divisive and to encourage inclusion. We do not want to gain a reputation that hinders the efforts that our Chamber of Commerce is making to attract more business to this town. Sons of Confederate Veterans is a Portland-based group, and it, on its website, I found an article on its blog promoting a Mississippi ballot measure making English the official language and Christianity the official state religion of Mississippi. That's not exactly conducive to First Amendment rights either. This hasn't played well in the larger community, and as you've heard, there are already floats being planned for next year's parade that will truly test this council's commitment to the First Amendment if we do not make a future plan that with some sensible rules that all of us could find acceptable. I do not want this parade to turn into a political shouting match. That is not the spirit of this event. And I would like to end that division and work towards a fun, family-friendly event for everyone. Thank you.
Siobhan O'Connor, you are up, and then Gregory, is it McKelvey? Will be next.
I think I'm going to stand, if that's okay.
That is perfectly okay.
Good evening, elected city councilors and engaged community members. My name is Siobhan O'Connor, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. While I do not live in Camby, I've lived in rural Clackamas County for 25-plus years. Every year, my family has looked forward and really enjoyed visiting this town for Fourth of July, for the county fair, for the David Festival, and the many other great events that you sponsor. We've also made hundreds of trips to Camby to watch our kids play your kids in basketball, soccer, baseball games. And I often wonder what you feed them down here, because we always get seriously big, well, not always. But tonight, you know, over the years, I've met many fine, good people from Camby, and I've watched your community grow in diversity and prosperity. Your future potential is truly exciting. However, I really want to speak to you tonight about the issue of racism, because it threatens that bright future, livability and economic prosperity. It's an issue that we share all across Clackamas County. Racism and growing anti-immigrant behaviors, we're seeing them all across Clackamas County. The political rhetoric that's out there right now is inciting that, and we as a community need to stand strong against it. As a mother of five kids and a current school board member in Oregon City, I see it in our schools and in the stories that I hear from the kids. I see it in the pickup trucks that are flying Confederate flags and brandishing rifles on the backroads of Clackamas County. I know that my experience differs, I'm an immigrant to this country, an Irish immigrant, and I know my experience differs substantially from immigrants of black or brown skin. That's wrong, that's shameful. That's not what America is about. It's not what brought me to this country. Sometimes we're seeing it in subtle ways, in graffiti on a bathroom wall, or in a float in a parade, not so subtle, or in, you know, a person of color being intimidated on public transport when, you know, ignorant folks come up with fist rites and, you know, Nazi tattoos under arms. It's disgusting and it's awful, and it's no place in a civil society. What worries me more is though that there are explicit violence things happening that are going on in the backroads of Clackamas County. Immigrants of color are being beaten up and they're too afraid to report it to the police. That worries me, that concerns me. We really need to take a very serious self-evaluation. We need to ask some deep questions right now. Who am I? Who are we? You know, we are a community that needs to stand together. I mean, what is our society about? What is American society? These are really cultural identity issues that you have. And I'm bringing, you know, a foreigner's perspective to this, I know, but this is serious stuff. We really need to work with our cities, our county, and our government agencies, our police departments, our schools, and our civic groups to address racism. I do not accept that we have to allow a symbol of hate to be in a float in a public parade. Surely, the city can set some parameters for parade participation, like Portland does for the ROTH Parade, for example. I know that's a private organization, not even that, but still, there are parameters set for participation. Even more radically, perhaps we could have the community decide what gets into the parade. Have a democratic vote, have people submit their ideas for the floats beforehand, and have the community vote on what it wants to see in its parade. You know, we own our communities. We really own our communities, and we need to stand up and declare what our community is.
Siobhan, last thought, okay?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I don't have the answer, but I urge you to think outside the box, because allowing your peak performance will further damage the immediate community and also threaten the economic investment in the area. I would like to understand what safeguards and precautions are now being taken regarding the upcoming Clackamas County Fair, so that we don't have racist groups infiltrating, reproducing, and stirring up hate in our communities. Perhaps a cross-cultural community building project such as the city mural painting effort could be undertaken, that would start the healing and start repairing some of the damage that's being done. I thank the city council for starting the conversation and taking a first step to tackle racism with tonight's proposed resolution, but it's not enough. Let's all work together to define a practical approach to address racism and make Clackamas County a happy, thriving type of community that is safe, welcoming, and economically thriving for all of its citizens. Clackamas, our diversity is our strength.
Okay. Thank you, Siobhan. Siobhan, on those, the ideas that you had, would you mind emailing those to me, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for your leadership there.
Thank you. Gregory McKelvey, did I say that? Thank you. And then Charles Gallia?
Gallia.
Gallia for Pamela White. All right, he's next. Mr. McKelvey.
How much time do I have?
You have three minutes, sir.
Three minutes, all right, let's make it snappy. All right, so my name is Gregory McKelvey. I'm a law student at Lewis and Clark Law School. I graduated from Oregon State University with degrees in history and political science and a minor in sociology, so I forget who said it, but I am educated on the matters that we're speaking up here today. I'm here today, my pants are all the way pulled up. I am looking at my phone a little bit, please don't judge me for that, because a little bit of the notes that I have here. I'm going to try and make it as quick as possible, since I only have three minutes. I've never been good with time limits, so hopefully, yeah, just cut the mic off when we have to.
Lord, yeah.
Yeah, awesome. So, I just want to say that this is so much bigger than a flag, right? And it's not, the racism that we're confronting today is not the kind of racism where I'm afraid of the people that were speaking in support of the flag here are going to lynch me when I go outside. It's that those people are going to continue to support the systematic repression of people of color once they leave here. It's so much bigger than a flag. And it's so much bigger than feelings, okay? It's not feelings, because we as people of color live this every single day. When we see that flag, we are reminded of what was a genocide of our people for so long, and the systematic repression that has gone on from our institutions since that, since we were brought over here and we didn't want to. And so when people are sitting here like, oh, I'm not racist, I've never lynched a black person in my life. I don't, I don't think that you are, and I don't think that you're going to. The problem is that you're supporting these systems. And for you to say I don't see race is just ridiculous. That's like if, if me and one of you guys are going out tonight and I beg you, please can I pick our outfits? Please can I pick our outfits? You don't really want me to pick your outfit, but I do it anyway, right? I'm going to pick, and you come out, and then I'm wearing the nicest stuff in the world, and I dress you in rags, right? And then I'm going to sit and say, and you're going to say, why am I in rags? And you're in this. And I'm going to say, oh, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what you're wearing, it matters what's on the inside. Well, then why did you set it up this way? It's not about the flag, it's so much bigger than a cloth. But I would ask you guys, why would the, why would this piece of cloth be so much more important than, than how welcoming your community is? Why, why would your attachment to whatever happened in the South, or whatever, whatever your idea of, of what the Civil War was fought over, why is that history so much more important than what we are living here today? Why is your attachment to this cloth so much more important than the systematic oppression that people of color are feeling every day in Clackamas County and Camby and all of Oregon? Oregon was founded as a white utopia, and until we realize that and we start breaking down the systems, the systems, not the cloths, that are perpetuating the system, nothing's going to get done. So I like your guys' resolution. I do think that it's so much bigger than a flag, and you guys need to live the thoughts of that resolution in every single thing that you pass for now on, whether it's in education, whether it's in the services that you guys are willing to provide, because all of this goes into what's going on with the people of color, and it's so much more than the feeling that we see when we see this, this symbol of our genocide.
So Charles, and then Dan, I'm sorry, Mickey Elliott, did I do it all right?
You were close.
Close, all right.
So, I'm Charles, I'm Charles Gallia, and I guess I could be considered a foreigner in subsorts. I'm in the unincorporated area adjacent to Oregon City. I was also, I was in the parade. I was in the float that was in front of the Confederate flags. I'm a candidate for state representative, and so I was going through the, meeting the people and the, and the, along the route. And I could tell you that I felt a distinct difference in certain parts of the parade when there were people of color whose hands I shook, and in their eyes I could tell that the symbol that was adjacent to me was having an effect on them. I have a, I'm not an attorney, I actually have a PhD in public administration, and so I have a slightly different perspective than your council. And I would like you to consider that your city may be at risk for giving the implication of condoning this message. The association between the flag and the Ku Klux Klan was rather clear. It was formed in part to intimidate, threaten, and kill people of color. Its purpose wasn't just hate, it was actually to oppress individuals, to cause terror. That's the intention. That's the same thing with the cloaked hoods. There's no distinction between those. It would also suggest that the city might have more authority than it's what it's considering. For example, the recent Supreme Court decision gave this, the state of Texas the right not to display the Confederate flag on its license plates. This, both the hate speech and actually, speech that includes emotional distress is not protected. Okay. My intention was to also read a letter from Pamela White, and our suggestion, I think, which you have, I believe in, I hope that it could be included in the record, is that you would be more explicit and not merely stop at the line where it says that the flag is something that would be objectionable or offensive. This is much more than that. This is a message that you're condoning if you don't take a very explicit opposition to the display of the flag that is meant to invoke fear and hatred and kill people. And that's it.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Dan, and then Paul, thank you for sending, is it, Gavish? Pardon me? Gavish, thank you, sir. So Dan.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan McElhenney. I live here in Camby. I raised my kids with my wife, we raised our kids here. First of all, I want to thank the staff for being here this evening. Being a government worker, it's not an easy job to do sometimes. And being a city administrator, I don't know how you do it at all. I want to thank the council, too. You've been in the hot seat, and you volunteered for this. I don't know what you were thinking, but thank you, too, for doing this. But being leaders, sometimes you have to take the heat. Anyway, I want to say a couple of things. We can't just pass a resolution and go home, with all due respect to the comments that were made earlier. There is a serious problem here in, in Oregon and here in Camby regarding race. It's just not set. We need to examine that, we really do. We're kind of kidding ourselves. My wife talks to me about my weight, and I'm deluding myself about doing a good job, and I'm not. And I think the same is said for the community in general, not about the weight, but about dealing with how we interact with each other and how we treat each other. I am so impressed with that young man who went to Oregon State and studied history. I went to Oregon State and studied history, and I could never speak as articulate as he could. I'm really impressed. I am humbled. But I would say today is the first day of a step forward. This, this controversy is not going to end. I learned tonight that it sounds like this group is going to be back this next year. I would hope we could enter into a dialogue to discuss a compromise with this float. It is a complex issue. Being a student of history in the 1800s, if you read The Red Badge of Courage, there are Confederates, they were very, very brave, and there were Union people that were very, very brave. One minute? Okay, I'll be almost done. And so that can't be dismissed or ignored. And so, that can't be dismissed or ignored. But you can also not ignore that this, these flags were appropriated in the 50s and the 60s to persecute and to harm people. And I'm sorry, these flags do hurt people. It isn't a feeling. It is, it is physical hurt, I'm assuming. I'm lucky enough, I'm a white male. I'm assuming that. But I think, I'm a human being and I think it does hurt people, and we can't permit that to start to continue. And I think this is an opportunity for us to move forward, and I would be willing to volunteer in some sort of activity that helps reach out to the community and try to at least start a dialogue to talk to one another. May not be able to solve problems, but maybe start talking and, and grassroots effort and trying to reach some compromises. Maybe we don't need, maybe we don't need flags on that float. Maybe we need statues of those brave young men back in the Confederacy that gave their lives to a cause that they believed in. Maybe there's some sort of compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul?
Paul DeBussch.
Hello, sir.
Thank you, sir. Father of five and lived in Clackamas County for over 25 years. So, my thanks to Mr. Mayor, the council, and fellow citizens. When I think of the Fourth of July, I think of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So, it's a sad heart that I come here on this occasion. In my case, also a pursuit of too much beer and hot dogs. I guess, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but I would just like to echo some of the eloquent speeches before, but I don't think it's about the First Amendment or the flag. I think what it is, is that there is a connotation or implication that the city, you know, condoned this Stars and Bars parade. And I think that I'd like to, you know, in the words of President Lincoln, "Appeal to the better angels of our nature, that we can surely come to some compromise in the 21st century in, given the, the week that we've had with divisiveness instead of diversity." And so, to that end, the other part I would say is that I would really like to look forward to the idea that we can come to a fair process, support this resolution, and that it will be positive and inclusive for all the different groups. And I really would encourage that, to make it fair for everybody. The final part is to echo the mayor's earlier comment, was that it is a learned behavior, whether you like it or not. Go back to the fact that, yeah, nobody's First Amendment rights, to my understanding, were put on the line. If you wanted to wave the Stars and Bars and the style, you know, the pavement, you could do so. But again, the implication is it was condoned by Canby and the citizens of Clackamas. And so, I think that's very, very upsetting, as you've heard very eloquently from any other groups. Again, life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness, and the better angels in our nature. I know that this council can deliver on that, both for the city of Canby and for Clackamas County citizens. And I wholeheartedly hope that you will support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Tyler Smith and then Rena Bicknell.
Thank you, Mayor Hodson. My name's Tyler Smith. I did not plan on talking tonight. I didn't even think I was gonna be here, but I heard about this situation last night. And I am an attorney here in Canby. I own the largest law firm in Canby, and my law firm does sue governments on things exactly like this, literally, almost word for word, parades, initiative petitions, free speech issues around this state, and wins quite frequently. So, I happen to know a lot about this issue. So, I, but I wasn't planning on speaking today, and I wasn't even planning on being here until I drafted a compromise resolution here. I read the resolution that was sent to me by email yesterday and wanted you all to know that that particular resolution would not even put you in hot water. You would be underwater in hot water, and a law firm like mine would be able to pick it apart. When you say something in a resolution like, "The city of Canby hereby prohibits something," bam, you have just set yourselves up for liability. You have now prohibited speech. I could walk into court tomorrow and I would bet a 99.9% chance I could get an injunction on your prohibition on that speech. And that's what the resolution that was drafted said. So, I've tried to make some corrections to that, and I'll tell you why. I have absolutely no ties whatsoever, as far as I know, to anything in the Confederate history of the world. But what I noticed here today, and I'd ask you to take a step back and look at what you're being asked to do by the two sides, and there is a chasm. There is a drastic difference. You see people that are fired up about the racism issues in our nation, and you see people that are trying to protect the First Amendment. Those two things are not incompatible. What I ask you to take a look at and how to solve this situation is that you are being asked by some people to use your power as the government to squash other people, to tell them, "You cannot be in our parade. You cannot say what you wanna say. You cannot do what you wanna do." Those people want to take the power of the government to tell other people that you have to shut up, that you can't participate with us. They're asking you to assert your power to stop other people from doing something. And I would ask you to refrain from doing that. You should not be using the power of the government to squash other people, to squash a minority group. Because this group thinks they have a majority position right now, they're asking you to squash other people. And that is exactly what your position and your power in government should not be doing. But what you can and should do as a government is speak with your voice. You can pass a resolution that says, "This is our opinion. We support these principles." And that's what I wrote in an alternative resolution that you have that says, "We oppose racism. We oppose hatred." And I believe you all have a copy of that that takes you out of the oppressor's seat and into the role of the leadership of a city. Thank you.
Rena and then Irene.
Hello. My name is Katrina Bicknell. I go by Rena. I was not planning on speaking tonight, so I don't have anything formal prepared, but I am a student at Willamette University. I'm undergrad in psychology, studying with a minor in Spanish. And I have lived in Canby just for, on and off, like mostly during the summer and on certain weekends during the school year. And I have never witnessed anything as terrifyingly, I guess, stark as the parade that, the parade float that was, that was flying the Confederate flag. I oppose the Confederate flag with almost everything that I have. I would say everything that I have. It is not outlawed here. It, it is protected under free speech. But in, in Europe, in spots where the Nazi flag is prohibited, they fly the Confederate flag. Let that sink in for a minute. If you are saying that you are condoning everyone's right to free speech, which I agree with, that leaves you, that leaves everyone in the community in a really awkward position of accepting something that Nazis use, something that represents racism throughout the entire history of the United States, the history that I am personally appalled at. I, I don't know that there's anything that the government can do. But living in a society that has these institutions in place to uphold racism in various institutions, I, he said it a lot better than I did. You, you grow up, I grew up, I grew up as a white person in a society that upholds whiteness as the ultimate. I, I've never experienced racism. There's no way that I would know what that's like. But taking steps for me to recognize that on a personal level and recognize where I can change that is the first step. And this is, I think, baseline for that. It's really not that hard to say, as a member of the community, "This is wrong. We do not support this." And, I mean, it's really simple. It seems really simple to me. So, that's all.
Irene and then Ken Hagan, you are next, sir.
Hello, councilors and mayor and engaged public. It's great to be here today. I wanted to share my strong opposition to the Confederate flag being flown in a parade or anywhere else, or any other symbol that perpetuates hate, racism, or oppression. I'm a resident here of 11 years and a homeowner. My kids have graduated from Canby High School, and it's a great place to live. It's a great community. But if we're going to have a business community that's thriving and people really enjoying their lives here, we have to make some changes. And I, I know that we had a lot of discussion here today. We've had legal advice, and I encourage you to research this project, this topic some more, and come up with a great solution that's going to be helpful for everyone living here. Let me read my statement. "The role of government is to serve all communities effectively, especially the most vulnerable ones. Due to a long history of exclusionary and discrimination policies, communities of color experience the most widespread barriers to improved social well-being. These barriers prevent communities from thriving and continue to cause community of color harm and experience the most economic and social outcomes of any demographic group. Equity and inclusion are the most smart ways to develop a thriving economy and prepare for a more diverse future. Research shows that places that attain more economic growth are those with greater racial inclusion and smaller racial disparities. Merging economic research shows that places that attain more economic growth are those with greater racial inclusion and smaller racial disparities. In addition, national, regional, and social equity research and best practices show that a racial, a racial equity inclusion approach is the most influential in guiding to its vision of a city where everyone benefits from quality jobs, stable and affordable housing, safe and reliable transportation, clean air, water, and a healthy environment. When we work through an equity and inclusion lens, barriers faced by communities of color and other groups such as people with low incomes, single moms, young people, seniors, and individuals with disabilities will be reduced, and Canby will become a great place to live for everyone." And I would like to say that we want a thriving community, and this is how we get there. Thank you.
Ken Hagan and then Betty Crawford.
Good evening, mayor and all members of the council, city staff. My name's Ken Hagan. I've lived here all my life, third generation here in Canby. And I cannot believe what we do to ourselves. We, we talk about race. We talk about color. My parents were deaf. Did you realize that the deaf were institutionalized up until 1956 because they sounded insane? So, we look at a person of color, they're different from us. Oh, well, then they must be worse than us. We're white. We're perfect. A flag, oh, well, what does it mean? It's harmless. It's just a banner, that's all. It doesn't hurt anyone. Well, I've got a good friend that I met here just recently that's been hurt deeply, doesn't like to talk about it that much, and I'm not gonna mention his name. But that flag was thrown in his face and called many names in protection of that flag. So, I think there should be some sort of resolution. Maybe we do need a compromise. Maybe we do need something enacted, a group put together. I'm also a volunteer with Canby Television, CT5. I would be more than happy to put together some broadcasts if anybody is interested. But this discrimination, this racism has to stop. Why do we have to hate each other so? Because someone is different. I was asked if it was legal for my parents to even purchase a vehicle. I don't think that's right. They, they're not, no, I don't think they know how. Oh, you mean, your parents are deaf and dumb? This is what I grew up with. So, you righteous people that think, "Oh, well, you know, don't harm, no foul," think again. At least consider the other person. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you. I'm good.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Betty Crawford. I have been a resident, proud resident of Canby for, I think now I have 40 years, what did I say? 36 years is what I figured. We've raised our kids in Canby. We've taught in Canby. We're now raising our grandchildren in Canby. We have raised our children to appreciate all cultures that love, all cultures that accept one another. Our kids are now raising our children, our grandchildren, the same way. This is why we stayed in Canby, because of what Canby represented. Yes, I've seen us grow from being a prejudiced community, partial with migrant workers and various others, but I've seen us grow in such wonderful and marvelous ways. And personally, to allow a flag of what it represents, freedom of speech or not, in our community takes us steps backwards in our growth in wonderful love for each other. I have been involved in politics in various ways for many years. One of the things I learned was in Salem, for every person that testifies or speaks up, they represent 100 people. I've been taking a rough tally this evening. We have had what I thought I got from most people, 15 people who spoke in pro of wanting our board, our community board, to take a stand, make some statements. Four, no. I also know that you were elected to represent this community, not other voices, the whole community. If you do look at how Salem tallies, one voice speaking for 100, I challenge you to look and know the voices that have come here to speak tonight. And I ask you that we continue growing as Canby of love, not hatred. Thank you.
Greg Perez and then Eric Ernst.
All good, let him go.
Okay. Eric?
Good evening. My name's Eric Ernst. I'm the commander of the Southwest Division of the Sons Confederated. So, I know all about the float. I was on the, on the float. I was one handing out the information. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for putting on such a great parade. I've been going to this parade pretty much my whole life, even though I live in Portland. We have some of our, some of the people that were on the float are actually, to correct things, they were actually, were from Canby, some of them. So, it was kind of representation, some of the representation of the, of the local community. But our organization is, I keep hearing this, this, everything's about racism, racism. This is not what we're about at all. This is not what our organization's about. We've been around for 120 years. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization based in Columbia, Tennessee, and we have over 35,000 members worldwide. Our division consists of six states out here. Our local camp is in Portland, Oregon. We have one in Eugene, too. We would love, we would really appreciate that, come up with a compromise, like what the gentleman over here, the lawyer, was saying. I think that would be a wise decision. We're a pretty strong organization, so we'd love to come back again, but if we're not welcome, then, yeah. But I just urge that maybe change the tone on it and maybe make it just a suggestion instead of actually barring us from actually participating. So, my, we all, actually, the, our organization, in order to be a member, you have to have a direct-line Confederate ancestor. So, my great-great-grandfather was James Pitts. He was in the 19th Corps Infantry. And I'm extremely proud of him standing up for, for his family. Him and three of his brothers all fought the same thing. Okay, thanks. So, that flag brings a lot of pride to me, that that's all part of America. I mean, like, if you're gonna start picking apart a flag, then you could pick apart any flag in this country. You could pick apart even our United States flag. I mean, look at all the things that, over the years, this country's been involved in that could be considered negative. So, I just would encourage that, please, vote against, against the measure. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Appreciate you coming. Thanks. And last but not least, Mr. Perez.
I think this would be a prime time to recruit volunteers, because there's a lot of people out here that have a lot of opinions, and that's good. But we need you in the community to volunteer for these things, like the parade, for instance, like all the other events that take place in Canby. We're blowing a lot of air here, but come on and join us in volunteering, because you can make a difference. Your voice and your opinion right now, I commend everyone. I'm not on anybody's side, I support everything. Things that you have said today are very important. Family, race, rights, everything is important. And I commend everybody for that. But we're going to have to work together. That's the thing. And you both got to cross the aisle and you got to work together. I feel that this whole thing could have been avoided. We shouldn't even be here. We shouldn't have been here last Wednesday, we shouldn't have been here today. The reason is, somebody instigated this. Somebody jumped on board and they took it. And they said, we don't want people to know about our community being bad or have a reputation for racism. Well, what you did is you identified us, Oregon Live, the AP, Nationwide, that's what we did. We could have worked together, approached these people, let them do their jobs. You come in as a group, a community group, and discuss collaboration, open forum. That's how we should have handled it, but we blew it all out of proportion. But I expect everybody's rights, I see heads shaking, that's a person that doesn't want to be a part of. You're not a team member. If you go out and strike this on your own and stir the pot, you're not a team member here. So I strongly believe that. So I just want to say one thing. The 25 years I spent in the Army, I was a factor in giving you your rights and freedoms. And I feel good about doing that, because you're all here today speaking. And you have the right to. Everybody has rights and their own opinion. That's all right. Because, oh, listen, you got to be a good listener anyway. If you're going to be a speaker, you got to be a good listener. That's why I went last. I wanted to hear everybody speak their opinions. And I don't dislike anybody for their opinions. Color means nothing to me. I was in the military for 25 years, everybody's green. Everybody's green. So I've learned that, traveling all over the world. One thing that you need to do when you're able to travel, you need to travel out throughout the United States, get outside your comfort zone, and see what it's all about. Because it's different from Canby, it's different from Oregon. You have to experience that. And it's not a good thing, it's not a bad thing, it's just you're gaining knowledge of what this whole nation is all about. I hope that this group, that group, this group come together, and they work out a solution to where it's legal, nobody's stepping on anybody's toes, and we can move forward. You have to understand, this thing was dumped, the parade was dumped, seven months, volunteers had to put this thing together. It was a new thing. If we hadn't more volunteers, we have more ideas, we might not be here today. So, well, I'm recruiting for volunteers, so if you want to see me, I'll be in business tomorrow. So anyway, that's all I have to say. I want to see, we come to a resolution. You have to give this group, and if you have to meet again, you have to give this group time to do this the correct way. You don't want to shortchange anybody, because everybody needs to be a winner in this topic right now. Everybody needs to be a winner. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you all for your comments, appreciate that. And we will now move into conversation about the resolution.
If I may, I'll share a couple of observations relative to the resolution that I had drafted and the one which Tyler had edited and recommended to you. And I do want to express my appreciation to Mr. Smith, as he is a lawyer with extensive background in constitutional law. I'd like to touch on each of the points there. Of all the points that he has identified, recommendations he made, I like them all except one, and it's the one that he has the greatest opposition to. And I'd like to explain to you why I like it, and we can go from there. But if I could go point to point, the third paragraph, whereas the city council seeks to foster a, and the language was a culture of tolerance within the community. Tyler had suggested that the language be a culture of mutual understanding and appreciation for the inherent value of all human life within our community. And I think that sounds really good, I'm very comfortable with that. The second, which is the fourth paragraph, the second item that he identified, is whereas the city council of the city of Canby wishes to express...
The cities.
The cities, I actually wrote it, their right to free speech in support of a culture of tolerance within the community for all. Tyler's recommendation is that the new language be, whereas the city council of the city of Canby wishes to express the city's right to speak out in support of a culture of respect for all people. And I think that sounds really good as well. Third one is, whereas in order to foster a culture of tolerance within the community for all persons, the city council wishes to express their opposition to the use of statements, symbols, actions, or activities that would convey messages of hatred, foster intolerance, or in any way seek to deprive any person of their fundamental rights. Tyler's suggestion is that that language be, whereas in order to foster a culture of appreciation for the inherent value of all human life. And that phrase is substituted for the word tolerance, which he suggests we remove. And then within, and I had used the, and he suggests our community, and I had for all persons, and he's more specifically identifying it to our community. I think that is great as well. The next section, the city council supports and endorses a culture of, again, I used tolerant. Tyler is suggesting that we use the phrase, the culture of appreciation for the inherent value of all human life and the promotion of socially acceptable behavior within the community. Toward, I said for, he says toward, I think that's great language, all persons regardless of race, sex, age, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or other characteristic. Again, on the second resolved, he would suggest that we keep the, that sentence the same, except, again, substituting intolerance for devaluing any human life. So the proposed language is, statements whether through the use of words, action, symbols, or in any other form expressing hatred or devaluing any human life are neither supported nor endorsed by the city council of the city of Canby. I think that sounds great. And I'd like to go to the, to the last one, and I'm going to skip three, because I'd like to go back to that separately. And he proposes that we change the very last word in the last paragraph to, to say that we are steadfast and vigorous in condemning all forms of unconstitutional infringement. And, instead of unconstitutional intolerance, and I'm great with that. I'd like to go back up to the third paragraph and speak specifically to that and explain my logic a little bit. I'll read what his proposed language is, and I'd like to speak briefly to my thoughts relative to, to the, his proposal, to the changes that he's recommending. My language says, the city council expressly forbids and condemns any intolerant statement that is not afforded protection as free speech under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Oregon. This inference is that any free speech that is afforded protection, we are not, we are neither condemning nor rejecting. But any, what Tyler has suggested is that we strike the words forbids and, and that entire last section, and that the new language would say, city council expressly condemns and rejects any intolerant statement made at any sponsored event that devalues human life. That's kind of consistent with several of the other statements. What I tried to do in this, in this third bullet is to differentiate between statements that are afforded protections under the First Amendment and statements that are not afforded protections in the First Amendment, and specifically speaking, in opposition to statements made that are not afforded protections in, under the First Amendment. And that goes back to categories that fall outside the protections, which include obscenity, child pornography, defamation, incitement to violence, and true threats of violence. And, and then this particular author, who happens to be the, this is, is coming out of, I think it's Penn State, where they established, yeah, Penn State, Pennsylvania Center for the First Amendment, so, so recognized and acknowledged expert, who says, even in the categories which I've identified for you as not protected areas, that there are tests that have to be met in order for the speech to be illegal. Beyond that, we are free to speak. I also thought it was, it was very appropriate that, that this particular topic that I was researching also included a quote from late Justice William Brennan in a case involving the burning of the American flag, where he said, if there's a bedrock principle underlying the First Amendment, it is that government may not prohibit the expression of an idea simply because society finds the idea itself offensive or disagreeable. And, and what I have, have tried to do, and particularly with regard to that third paragraph, is say, there is some speech that we find that falls under these categories, that are outside the protection, obscenity, child pornography, defamation, incitement to violence, and true threats to violence, that are, for all purposes, not protected under the First Amendment. And that's really what I'm trying to capture in this third bullet.
Okay. That's a question. So tolerance, I don't, yeah, I'm curious why tolerance was struck out so many times. I like the inclusion of tolerance personally so many times, because it's a strong concept, and I like that. I'm not sure why it was struck out so many times.
You know, I think Tyler did a, did a good job of that. He tried to define a position that was a little bit more expansive, that, that kind of covered more bases, if you will, without being exclusionary. So I think he's trying to say the same thing, but maybe in a slightly more politically correct way. Tolerance works for me, and it obviously is, is a word that, that I'm fond of using it, because you see it through the document, as, as that's really, I think, the core of this whole process, is there are certain things that, that are protected, and there are certain things that are not protected, and, and we need to find out how we can quantify and work within a framework that's established for us, and at the same time, show to our community and to the world that, and I have to go back to the word tolerance, that we haven't tolerance for, for messages of hate. And it doesn't mean that we don't respect that they may be protected by the First Amendment unless it falls under that paragraph three there, it just means that we don't like them. Doesn't mean we don't allow them, it means we don't like them. And there's, and you have to be really careful when you, when you start addressing issues relating to constitutional protections. And what I tried to do was, was write a very strong statement that, that says that we are going to take whatever steps we are legally permissible to take to be, A, and again, I hate to use the word, but, to, to be intolerant to people who, who cross the line of what is legally permissible.
Counsel, do you have a question?
No, actually, I just wanted to speak to the word tolerance and the replacement language. I think that the word tolerance has become more of a political buzzword than anything that really isn't clear to some people what is tolerance. And I think that the replacement language, a foster a culture of mutual understanding and appreciation for the inherent value of all human life, that is something people kind of identify with more than, well, what is tolerant? I have to tolerate something that I don't like? Or am I going to try to learn how to understand that person's point of view? I think this is better language, and it says more, it's more of a, more of a message of what it is we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I have to admit that I wish I had thought of it, because I think it's more descriptive.
Okay. Thank you. There's a...
Please, go ahead.
There's a difference, though, tolerance and the value of all human life. We're talking about rights. And I think if we talk about the value of human life, that almost starts to go into the pro-choice, pro... It's, it's going down the slippery slope, slope of abortion, is how I see it. And so we've, we've got a terminology debate here of what's tolerant, like what that buzzword means, and what the value of all human life means. That's my concern.
And there is, and I, and I appreciate that, and I think that is a good point, and a point that supports my use of the word tolerance so many times. But, and why I tried to, to identify all characteristics of, you know, when speaking to, to race, sex, age, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or other characteristics. You know, and maybe tolerance is the right word, maybe that's the word that the council wants to use. Just wanted to point out that, that I, I thought that Tyler's approach to this was perhaps more artful than mine, mine was perhaps more direct than Tyler's. And Tyler is looking at this in terms of how this document could be viewed by a litigant and, and that may be interested in challenging the city. I am comfortable that, that this language is, is defensible. And Tyler's indicated that he has some concerns about it, and I appreciate that he has taken his personal time to express those concerns. And as I said, on, on one resolve, I don't agree with him. I think that we do need to make a statement that, that we, a strong statement against anything that is not protected under the First Amendment. And I think that's appropriate for, for an organization like the city of Canby that is, that is trying to establish a line beyond which we're, we refuse to consider any further discussion. The, and perhaps the, perhaps the use of...
Make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Maybe we noodle that for a moment, you know, unless we want to, there's a suggestion, wordsmithing-wise.
All I can think of is to say, for the inherent value of all people living within our community, if you want to get out of the whole abortion issue, that takes that off the board. It's not about human life, it's about people.
Yeah, it's not the word human life, it's people.
So whereas in order to foster a culture of appreciation for the inherent value...
Yeah, I was going to suggest we just take the word human, the two words human life out, mutual understanding, appreciation, for the inherent value of all.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm still trying to get my head around what we're doing here.
Apparently we're wordsmithing a resolution.
Well, I mean, if I have, if I can, if I can make a point of order, Mr. Mayor. That for the past couple of years, I've talked about trying to keep the city council in line with our charter, which is, we wake up every morning and have one decision, and that's whether we fire our city administrator or not. And if the answer's no, then we let him run the city. What we do is provide guidance and policy. And I have made all of you sick with the number of times that I've said, what's the policy thing here?
I keep a tally.
So are, are we at all trying... So are we at all trying to attack the microscopic management aspect of who's in the parade or not? Are we at elevation zero? Or can we go up to 30,000 feet and say, "We're going to be a policy board. We're going to say, 'This is the policy of this city council. This is what we believe, but we're going to leave the management of this city to what the charter says, which is the city manager.'"
Well, and I agree with, I mean, that aspect. I mean, that's why we pay him to be here, to run the city in the day-to-day piece.
But how are you defining us in this discussion here? Do you want to have a vote by this panel on who can be in and out of the parade? Or are we going to keep it at a higher level of, "This is our city policy"? Because I keep hearing testimony that goes back and forth there. And I'm afraid, with some people, if we say, "Okay, we're going to be a policy board, and we're going to say, 'We're against hate, we're against discrimination, we're against symbols of that, and that is our job as a policy board, and that's what the charter says we can do,'" some people are going to say, "That's not what I want you to do. I want you to ban this float from the parade next year."
Sure. No, and that's where I see this piece as being a policy position, that therefore, going forward, those two guys, and led by Kim, you know, can do the heavy lifting in terms of the day-to-day piece. If there's pieces that need to be looked at, in terms of, you know, I reached out to Lila Gottman about their position and how they experienced this when they were running, when General Canby Day was running this, and she couldn't recall if there'd ever been a Confederate flag in any of the parades that they ran.
No, it was a special gift that we got.
The gift that keeps on giving. And so she said, first off, she didn't have the position we were in. And then, secondly, she went on to say that if she would have been in the same position that we would have been in. If somebody came in wanting to be, even as General Canby Day, they would have had to allow that float to be in there, because they would then potentially be at risk of losing their nonprofit status, and therefore would not be able to continue on doing what they were doing. So in that regards, you know, so there isn't a banning here at all. It's a definition of, this is the culture, this is the wish for our community, in that we're not, this is not us.
Okay.
We're not a hateful community. We do support each other. I have seen this community band together and do some amazing things. And I think that this is a -- yeah, this is a big blemish. It's a black eye for right now. It'll heal. It'll go away, providing all y'all here, and all y'all on TV in this group can work together to make that happen. Okay? Sarah said, "Top-down, bottom-up." I agree. So this, to me, is about setting that parameter, or, hey, this is what we as a body want.
Expectation.
An expectation.
I'm comfortable with that. What I...
I don't want to be, again, I've had conversations, and maybe you have as well,
where people say, "I don't want that float in the parade. I want you guys to pass a rule and say, you shouldn't, you can't come back."
Right.
And that's what this is, though, saying, "We can't discriminate haphazardly. Everybody is welcome." That's what we're saying, because we're supporting the First Amendment, and that's the whole purpose of this.
And I'm okay with this, but I'm trying to say, what's on the table for discussion?
What's the policy?
Are we trying to write the form for parade application next year or not?
No. No. That's...
That's a different discussion, though.
That's not us.
Not today.
That'll be the volunteers that Greg Perez just gathered together to come and do that.
And let me clear the record on two things. One, because you did mention that, and I was wrong at the last meeting, where I talked about that we wouldn't have had this problem if this had been, remained in the hands of a nonprofit group, that, as you pointed out correctly, a nonprofit would still be faced with the same type of legal challenges. It just wouldn't be a government, but they would be forced to. And I was in error when I said that. And, secondly, to anybody who thinks that Mr. Perez was lecturing him, he called me at 5:30 a.m. and said, "Why aren't you down here at the gazebo yet?" So he started his volunteer -- he has every right to say, "Where were you on the Fourth of July?"
And, you know, the point about, you know, that was a concern, that, you know, even from Lila's position was, you know, that's just not what we do.
My head is now a little clearer.
Perfect.
May I suggest one thing? Could I read you what I would propose to you as language after hearing your conversation in a resolution, which will include and exclude some of the recommendations of Mr. Smith?
Sure.
As a starting point?
Right now.
Right now.
Okay.
So this is a resolution expressing opposition to messages of hate. Whereas the constitutions of the United States and the state of Oregon guarantee the right of the people to engage in First Amendment-protected activities, and whereas, in accordance with the City of Canby Charter, each official of the City of Canby takes an oath affirming support of the constitutions and laws of the United States, the state of Oregon, and the City of Canby. And whereas, the city council seeks to foster a culture of mutual understanding and appreciation for the inherent value of all within our community, for all persons, regardless of race, sex, age, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or other characteristic. And whereas, the city council of the City of Canby wishes to exercise the city's right to speak out in support of a culture of respect for all people. And whereas, in order to foster a culture of appreciation for the inherent value of all within our community, the city council wishes to express their opposition to the use of statements, symbols, actions, or activities that would convey messages of hatred, foster intolerance, or in any way seek to deprive any person of their fundamental rights. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the city council of the City of Canby as follows. The city council supports and endorses a culture of tolerance within the community toward all persons, regardless of race, sex, age, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or other characteristics. Statements, whether through the use of words, actions, symbols, or in any other form, expressing hatred or intolerance are neither supported nor endorsed by the city council of the City of Canby. The city council expressly forbids and condemns any intolerant statement made at any city-sponsored event that is not afforded protection as free speech under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the state of Oregon. The Canby City Council recognizes and embraces our responsibility to be vigilant in defense of the rights of all people, proactive in our attempts to be a welcoming community for all people looking for a better life, and steadfast and vigorous in condemning all forms of unconstitutional infringements.
I'm good with that, Mayor.
I wasn't sure the forbid part, but you qualified, so I'm going to do that.
Mr. Trump, you get to keep your job for another day.
Rick, could you read number three one more time?
Yes.
It got behind.
The city council expressly, and we could even leave that out. I can do it this way. "City Council expressly condemns and rejects any intolerant statement made at any city..." Now I'm starting to pick up the wrong one, excuse me. "The city council expressly condemns and rejects any statement made that is not afforded protection as free speech under the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the state of Oregon." And again, all this says is, if this is not protective speech, then we condemn and reject it. If it's protective speech, we embrace it. If it's not protective speech, then we don't.
I'm all right with condemn and reject.
Condemn and reject.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Given sometimes predatory by Councilor Parker, would it be appropriate to avail ourselves of some more free legal advice? Just a little feedback from Tyler.
Great idea.
Sure.
Mr. Smith, did we wordsmith that?
I did say "free."
This is pro bono now.
Yeah.
Well, I like what Rick did, he clarified. I think I was probably wrong on my interpretation with Spurs' version. Obviously prohibiting something that's not protected by the Constitution is not a problem. So I think I agree with his point on that. I think the problem, to address Counselor Height's question, is why I chose not to use the word tolerance. Would you rather be tolerated, or would you rather be appreciated and valued? Appreciated and valued is a much stronger position that gives more, in my opinion, and I seem to prefer the neutral thing, that should just be tolerated. Ah, tolerate my kids. It's one of those things. And then, from a legal perspective, getting back to that, in a court, now this, a verbal statement of the council is not something I think that ever go to court. It's just your opinion. You're entitled to your opinion. But if you use language like tolerate, or tolerance, or intolerance in an actual ordinance, it would be fake. What does intolerance mean? I mean, am I being intolerant when I discipline the kids on my baseball team for having a bad attitude? Am I being intolerant? So now, if I can't make a statement of intolerance to the kids on my baseball team about their bad behavior? That's what intolerance, intolerance has no real meaning that portrays just this, where you're talking about the inherent value of persons or whatever, that's a real meaning.
Was that the final one?
Does appreciation have a real meaning?
I'm sorry?
Does appreciation have a real meaning in a legal sense in that regard?
Anything, but...
I see you... Well, I think there's kind of a hybrid to the two that might work and address, not totally synonymous, but it's pretty close. Where you see tolerance, we could substitute depreciation and value for all persons. So reading the first resolve, "The city council supports and endorses a culture of appreciation and value for all persons within the community," and then you'd have to take toward all persons, and you would have, regardless of race, sex, age, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or other characteristic. So you capture both meanings, addressing the issue that you raised, whether, how you define appreciation by, I think you do it by qualifying it with value. And it would say, so reading it again, as I wordsmith it further, "The city council supports and endorses a culture of appreciation and value for all purposes within the community, regardless of race, sex, age, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or other characteristic." And so appreciation and value for all persons is substituted for tolerance in that particular sentence. And this is a resolution that's not an ordinance. You're not making a law, you're making a statement. I think it's important to understand that as a law.
I do like the appreciation and understanding. That lends some heart to it, and I appreciate that. The tolerance almost lends some teeth to it, just to make sure that people's rights, like basic civil rights, human rights, et cetera, are being maintained. So that's my opinion on it.
Can I ask a question, please? You could clarify appreciation by saying appreciation of dignity and respect of all persons. I think those are universal words that clarify appreciation and value.
Time to stop.
Is it normal process for a city council to, this resolution up for public comment for deteriorates, so that there's a need?
No.
No, it's not.
Generally, review.
A resolution, its advisory, it's not, it doesn't make law.
Yep.
So that means that we want to decide tonight and then move on? Is that what we're saying? We don't want to go back in two weeks? We want to be done tonight?
I think that we need to make that statement tonight. A lot of people came tonight, and we can change three or four words, but we won't change the intent, and we won't change the message. I think it's really important, at this juncture, that we be proactive in, I say that, and you're the decision body here, but that the city be proactive in defining its position here.
I do, oh, sorry. Thank you. I do like the new changes proposed with replacing tolerance with appreciation and usual respect and that kind of thing. I also like condemns and rejects versus forbids. I see this as two issues. I heard people talking about the parade and the flag. We're not going to change anybody's minds on any flag, no matter what the flag is. Confederate flag invokes hatred and fear in some, and pride for history in others. Those two are never going to meet. So this is where we tolerate, I suppose. I mean, it's the same with the rainbow. For me, the rainbow is God's promise. For others, it's a symbol of gay pride. We're never going to meet on that. We're going to move on. So this conversation, this debate, really is for another day, and probably not right here, because that's not what this issue is about. I think that whether or not it's allowed in the parade is also a separate issue to be debated another time with another committee, not for this body to decide. There was a parade committee. There will be a parade committee next year. Greg's already beating the drum for volunteers for that committee. So I think what I'm hearing that the citizens are wanting is a statement from the city that says that we're not condoning messages of hate, and I think that this new language does that, without stepping on the First Amendment rights, which was my biggest issue. We're not going to take away anyone's fundamental rights.
Okay. Thank you for that. So Counselor Dale, anything?
Yeah, a couple of questions for Joe.
Yeah.
Just clarification.
Okay.
Because you're our attorney.
Yes.
Does this language in any way, in your mind, run counter to or dilute the Bill of Rights?
No. I think it basically makes, it's a statement, so it's not an action, anyway. And it's your voice saying, you know, because government does have speech, taking a stand on the quality of the speech that occurs in your community. But it doesn't say, "We're not going to allow you or take away from your constitutional rights."
Okay. So in your mind, there is no ban in this language?
No.
For protected speech?
No. And in fact, if it had that result, then it would be unconstitutional, and it could be challenged, and then it would just be reversed.
My second question for you is, does this in, it will sound like a strange question, but does the language in any way, in your mind, raise a concern that it could be weaponized, so to speak, against other rights, say, in particular, freedom of religion?
Well, here's the thing. It's being a statement and not having, there's no legal effect in terms of, there's no punishment, there's no, you know, it's not linked to a fine or anything like that. So no, I mean, it's not weaponized yet, right? It's speech.
Okay. It's always a concern I have, is sometimes there's a tension between those two freedoms. And we have taken note of this to protect both. And I want to make sure that we don't, on one side, enable a future concern or impediment to the other.
Well, I hear you. And I guess the danger, perhaps, that you're speaking about is maybe either not living up to your own oath of following the Constitution and holding, you know, the constitutions of both the U.S. and Oregon, and then not being kind of a hypocrite, basically, and finding yourself in a situation where you're either limiting somebody's speech with your speech, or you're, you know, disallowing any sort of right to go on under your watch. So I don't see those dangers in this at all.
Do you, Tyler? Sorry. Did you have any concerns?
No, I think, you know, with those changes, it's a fair statement for the city to make. I don't think there's any legal problem with it. I think it's an allowance to write on, but not any legal jeopardy or any offensive weaponization of this, you know, unless you attach some sort of punishment to it. I've seen cities and school boards say that have other places in their codes that say their board members have to follow all their policies, and then some board member will come and say, "You're violating your oath to follow our ethical policies because you're not following this thing. So if one, you did something intolerant, then the other one could point the finger and say, 'You're being intolerant. You're violating the spiritual defense.'" That's the organization you talked about.
Or in particular, having it used against freedom of religion.
Well, you.
It'll be out there, your statement if you call it.
Yeah. But you're specifically supporting the First Amendment. And, and if I may, I'll read it, for anybody that may not be familiar with it. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances." So, so we're protecting all of those rights. And in our statement, we're saying that we don't have a great deal of, we're not happy about people that, that have intolerant, and I'm sorry to use that word again, but it is, statements or that, whose expressions are something other than what we like to embrace as, as an inclusive community that supports all of the special characteristics that we've identified here, or that are identified anywhere else. And, and I, and I think that we've accomplished that with this resolution as a statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Height, anything?
Is it time for closing remarks? Or, I don't have any questions.
We're just trying to, yeah, trying to, you know, if there's any questions or comments on the resolutions.
No questions for the resolution.
You know. Counselor Coleman, anything?
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody need another read-through, or are we coherent on what we've got here?
I think I got it.
Okay. Great.
I can listen to the video if I need to. I think I have it.
To the as amended part?
I think I have it.
Is there a motion then?
Joe's about to say something.
Well, I was just saying, are you, are you guys going to move to do it now?
That's my next, I'm about to ask for that, so if there's somebody that would like to make a motion, please, I'd greatly appreciate that.
I would love to.
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution 1246, expressing, expressing opposition to messages of hate.
And add, add as amended.
As amended.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yep. Great, may I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion's been made by Counselor Height, seconded by Counselor Rocha, to approve Resolution 1246, expressing opposition to messages of hate as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries six, zero. Thank you all. Kim, action review?
You have adopted Resolution 1246.
Great.
Only two of the powers.
Something that you wanted to say?
I have a closing, yeah.
Yeah.
I wanted to thank everybody for coming and exercising your First Amendment rights, freedom of speech here. It's great to see such a full council chamber and community members so engaged in wanting to unify and strengthen our community. You know, representation on all sides of the political spectrum, we're here, and I appreciate that diversity, too. Some themes of love and unity came out, and they kind of overrode. I think they're very strong. And things, here are three things that I'm coming away with. The idea of a community group to have, to open the discussion about inclusivity that the man over here had said he'd volunteer for, I think he's gone now. I thought that was interesting, and maybe partnering with Bridging Cultures to open that discussion would be a great idea. CTV5 hosting a broadcast, the man mentioned that as well. I think that's a good idea. And somebody had said a community mural project, which is a nice, kind of an artistic expression. But thank you for all of your comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you, all of you, for your hard work this week. I know it's not been an easy week, so thank you, and to you as well, Rick. Thank you. This has been a lot of hours plugged into this, so thank you all for that. To everyone that's here and spoke, and those of you that didn't speak, thank you for being here. You know, to Counselor Height's point, it's, situations like this arise in a community, and it's not easy to talk about, and it gets heated, and it gets excitable, which can be good and bad. And I hope that now that we've had this conversation, that we can now start looking at ways to kind of move forward from this and improve the situation, because that's, that's what needs to happen. You know, the things that we're seeing, I think, out nationally, there's, we need this, we need this type of conversation to occur, we need to have that kind of unity. And I, Mr. Perez made the point, it does, it means that we do have to come together, we do need to have these conversations. Can't be afraid to have them. Sometimes that means, you know, 1:30 in the morning at, you know, someone's house to talk through the issues and things. So thank you all for being here, I really do appreciate it very much. I said, I, please, if you've got thoughts, comments, additional suggestions, please email me. That is the best way to get in touch with me or any of the other councilors, you know, with your ideas, so that we can keep this kind of moving forward. So thank you. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So maybe a second.
Great. Motion's been made by Counselor Anthony, and seconded by Counselor Rocha to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, Canby, thank you.